Landscape features, fences, walls, driveways, and culverts is being added to that particular part of our code. Let me add again, I didn't have my microphone on here. It's Wednesday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, seven P. M., our planning commission meeting of City of Woodland Hills, and starting with a public hearing on those two items. The five-five-five South Woodland Hills Drive pertains to a zone change for Rod and Emily Guerrero, requesting a change to R-one-nineteen, and their plans are to create, divide a single lot into two that would just be less than an acre for each of those lots. They live on one of the lots presently, and they would divide that and create a second The item number two, where we've placed the change in our code having to do with culverts, it's an area where we're going to be requiring, the city is requiring homeowners to keep the culverts clear from debris. And it would read accordingly, culverts under private driveways and culverts under private access roads to main city streets are required to be kept clean and free from any of the debris that would prevent a free flow of water through the covert from end to end. The private property owner is responsible, even though they're located on the city right-of-way. It's similar to our ordinance on sidewalks. Sidewalks are on public right-of-ways, but we require homeowners where the sidewalk fronts their home to keep it free from snow and ice during the wintertime. So we'll take any public comment. Are there any here who would wish to make a comment on any of those items? Emily?
I think that was the title of the address. It was actually by a town.
Oh, it is. You're right. Thank you for that correction.
Five yards.
Five yards?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I don't see any online who wish to make any comment, and none here. So we will close the public hearing at seven oh-four P. M., and we will make those items part of our agenda as we get into our meeting tonight. Next item is calling our regular planning commission meeting to order. Time is seven oh-four P. M. John Wallace, would you offer a pledge for us? Lead us in a pledge? And Larry Henry, would you offer invocation for us? Okay. Would you like to stand and join us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My Father in heaven, we approach thee in prayer this evening at the beginning of this Woodland Hills Planning Commission meeting, grateful for this opportunity to meet together. We hope that we might be able to understand the needs of our citizens, that we can do what is best in their interest and the interest of our community. Grateful for this nation in which we live, the freedoms that we enjoy, and we pray that we might be diligent in preserving those freedoms. Grateful for family, grateful for friends, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Amen. Thank you. Is there any public comment that anybody would like to make on any other subject or topic? Okay, we'll go ahead then with our other business of planning commission. First is approval of the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting minutes. Their, the recording didn't pick up our opening last month, but John Stout reminded me that of who led in the pledge and offered invocation, so I changed the minutes to reflect that and got the other business that we conducted from the recording that we made last week or last year. Yeah, last month. So we got those all corrected. So, matter of mind, I'll take a motion then for the minutes for March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. I move approval of the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting minutes. Okay.
I second it.
All right, second by John Stout. Any further comment about them or questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a lot line adjustment. A lot to one eighty-three Woodland Hills Platte B. And that pertains to a lot that's owned by David and Jody Stones. They're here tonight. Is there, there's a plat there that shows you how they were, how they're planning on changing, making two lots out of that. And I understand the one lot is a potential building lot for Nick Stones, correct? Anything that you all want to add? Because we've approved the, this is just an adjustment?
No, this had to, it was a preliminary.
Yeah, we did the preliminary already.
But they wanted, water share, there was.
I saw the letter for water share.
All the other things involved.
This is just now, this is kind of finalizing everything.
We need lawyers and sort that picture.
Yeah, it's got all the.
Well, that's up to you.
No, it's just, you're right, I'm here with the tax.
Yes.
I assume on the water thing, that's all been.
It's all been resolved. Yep, they purchased a water share for the new lot. That's been needed from the city, so that part is all taken care of.
So we're good to go? We just need to approve it?
Yep. So I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number eight of the lot line adjustment, Woodland Hills Lot One Eighty-three, Woodland Hills Platte B, that's what we're calling, and as submitted in the file.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Mary Henry second, John Wallace first. Any further discussion about it? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Very well.
Hope you guys like each other.
You like your grandkids. If he's got grandkids, it's working.
Yeah. Very good. Eight. Move on to number nine. Nine is a lot delineation between, with a combining of lots one and two, Mountain Oak subdivision. Those lots are presently owned by the Backas, and they are here tonight. They'd just be adjusting a line there and taking that lot line out and making one lot out of two. Anything that you would like to add to that?
Is this the one on Maple Ravine?
It is.
Okay. I think you have a couple of signs on both of them, right? I saw that plow in this winter. All right. I saw the same name, I thought, I bet they bought two lots, they're gonna do seven. All right.
Yeah, we bought, two or three years ago, and now we wanted to put them together and maybe better placing for the house.
Yep. Okay. Awesome.
So you do have plans in to build?
We have plans, we haven't started. We kind of put a little bit on hold just because of the way everything went through COVID to do, we're gonna start back in two thousand, or two thousand when we first bought it, and we shut everything down in the meantime to try to get the lot cleaned up and figure a few more things out, but then we decided that we want to put them together, just that way we could place the house right square in the middle and not be frigging on some other house or whatever.
Yes. Okay. So that, that lot's on the east side of the road, is that correct?
Not on the north side, I mean, I think if the road runs.
Okay. Right, it turns.
Yeah, there's, it's like the fourth lot, fourth and fifth, excuse me, in lots, they're building a house on the end of the cul-de-sac, and there's one over there, and there's an empty lot in R-two.
Right.
And then another house next to it, we'll be on the next.
We're a lot away from the Lysimbees.
Yeah, I say Lysimbees are there.
Lysimbees, and there's a lot.
And then there's a lot there, and then yours. Okay. Okay.
So basically, yeah, we just wanted to move that center line out, and then obviously we'll delete one of the water meters that's there because we don't need to do.
Yeah, gives you a bigger building envelope.
That's really all we're trying to change is that.
Okay. Now, are there any easements through that area?
No, there's, we've had it all enough, we've summarized it, we've created a whole bunch of the paperwork we created earlier.
It just shifts it all to the.
It's all been done and approved, we just have to get the final few guys basically, and then do the final paperwork.
Okay. I agree with that understanding as well, so. Any other questions?
Nothing out of the ordinary, right?
No. Now, if, if they decrease from two meters to one, the lot originally had two shares of water, correct? Correct. But they lose one.
That's right.
Okay.
The city keeps that. Yeah, it's already dated to the city, so it's not like they own it.
We haven't decided whether we're doing that or not.
Okay.
That isn't, but that wasn't part of this discussion, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
It has a future down the road when we get further into it.
I'd just like people to know what's going on, so.
Sure.
Five years down the road, they'll say, whoa!
Right, now, we're aware each lot has, has one water share. We'll have two unless we remove the meter. We'll have one, so, yeah. And the last name is Pelkri. My name's hyphenated, but my husband doesn't use my maiden name.
She's the one that actually, she's the one that actually owns this, her name's on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's okay, we can live with that.
Okay, I'll take a motion on item number nine, as far as combining those two lots into one.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Very good, thank you for being here. Move on to item number ten. This is a, another lot line delineation. This has been hanging around for a while, and due to one reason or another, it hasn't gotten approved at our level, although the recorder, the county recorder's office has recorded it, so.
Because this is John, this is John Peterson.
It is.
And these, this is his three lots that he combined into one.
This is actually, the other two were already done, so this is.
Yeah, he added the third one, the one where the driveway is.
Right.
And I see the wildlife corridor, that was my question tonight.
Yeah.
It's, yes, just kind of.
It's delineated there, and that will stay.
Just interesting.
Why would that stay on there?
The easements generally, they don't remove them when they're.
No, I just, attention, that's laid out there.
Yeah. So is anybody here representing him tonight, or them?
I don't see anybody on John's end that I recognize.
Okay. But that's, that's a story. In fact, we have the Mylar here on the table, if you wanted to, wanted to see that, it's been prepared.
I assume it's just like this, right?
So, yeah. Yeah. Any other questions on that? Lot, and then we'll take a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. John Stout, motion to prove. Larry Henry, a second. Any further discussion? Hey, voting, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item number twelve is then a, any further discussion? Eventually have a vote on the culvert. We've actually had a vote on it.
So you skipped eleven?
We perfected the writing.
I skipped eleven.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yep, we did, thank you. That's on the Guerrero zone change and property boundary. There's, there are a couple of requests that we made of the Guerrero's, which they've agreed to. Just a little bit of background, they originally requested an R-one, one-acre zone and dividing two lots. The lots divided were just less than an acre, so they didn't fall within the criteria of the R-one-dash-one zone. So city suggested to them to zone at R-one-nineteen under, with the understanding that they won't make quarter-acre lots out of it, that they will, they will stay with the just under one acre division and dividing the two lots, which they wanted to do in the first place, so.
So currently, we're looking at a zoning change, not necessarily a plat at this point, is that correct?
Yeah.
Looking at zoning change, this is potentially what you're looking at doing, though, right? With the two lots.
Correct, how they will be divided. And further, that the lot that will eventually be developed will have its driveway on.
Valley View.
Valley View.
Instead of Woodland Hills Drive.
Yeah, that's wise. To lessen the traffic on Woodland Hills, and they, they're fine with that.
It's, it's safer for them anyway.
So when, when the, when the plat's done, those two items will be shown on the plat so that future owners will know that that's the, that's the criterion standard that will exist with those two lots.
So is there a structure on one of these currently?
Yes, we have a.
On the equivalent of what I see as Lot Two here, right? Okay.
Emily, do you have anything to add to my comments?
I think that covered everything.
Okay. Any, any questions?
So with an approval of the zoning, can we add that caveat? That it's maximum of two lots for this, or how, I'm not sure.
Sure, yeah, we can, yeah. Particularly that the lots will be the size as depicted here.
As depicted here.
Yeah.
Or very close to that.
Okay, we'll take a motion on item eleven. So I've noticed that the neighbors' names and addresses is here, is that because they had input or an opportunity to voice? They have an opportunity to voice, and that's a requirement for a zone change.
They had to have notified neighbors, right?
Right. Yeah. Notified around, and we didn't get any comment, negative comment back about doing that. Another reason for the public hearing today was an opportunity for anybody that had any concerns to come here and address it. Correct. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll take a motion then on that. Also move.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mary Henry made a motion, John Stout seconded that, to approve the rezoning to R-one-nineteen.
With the clar, with the clarification, right?
Yes. Those lot sizes will remain as shown in the driveway will proposal, the driveway will be off of.
Valley View.
Valley View.
So we'll have that shown on the plat?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Yes, please. Yeah, yeah, you're fine. Good. I don't worry. I'm still waiting for another Italian. Thank you.
I saw them, I can bring that. It's finished past here, ready to perform a test. Okay, done, next time I do it, I'll bring it.
Now to twelve is the proposed wording, as I indicated, for the, for the change to that ordinance, adding culverts as far as cleanout. I know, I just, for the record, that Severin had objection to it, but I think we can work through that, and we have major issues where people have maybe extra-long culverts and aren't able to, to get those cleaned out through their own initiative, that we can put them on a, on a list and, and see what we can do for, by way of the fire department and going around and, and helping on occasion clean some of those culverts out, so.
So Monday after Severin sent that, I forwarded that to Craig, Ted, and Doral, and I did get some feedback from all three.
Okay.
I think I told you.
Yeah.
As you saw that. I saw it as well. It's, I mean, we do not want to be the go-to, for sure.
No, I, yep.
Department, you know, some of the concerns that were addressed from those three amongst this is, obviously, equipment's designed to perform certain functions, and when you use it outside of those parameters, sometimes it's not good for the project. So, again, just something to keep in mind, Craig and I were talking today.
And/or future funding.
Possibility. So it's just something to be careful, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, if you, we don't want to set a precedent, that's the biggest concern.
Yeah.
So again, somebody bring it up, and if you hear, pass it on to us, we'll send it internally.
And that's something completely within the city's control.
Yeah.
So, okay, noted. So take a motion for recommendation then to the city council to, for that particular ordinance change.
I propose. We threw ten-dash-eleven-dash-eight landscape feature expenses, walls, strawberries, and culverts, A, period, or period, as submitted here.
Okay.
I second it.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. The item thirteen is a change to our ordinance having to do with service of sewers to our The, this is in compliance with the state statute also, which is kind of drafted almost, not the exact wording, but similar wording. Let me read it. This would be a change to, added to eight.
This is the new verbiage?
Yes. This is the verbiage that would be included here, having to do with sewer service.
In new construction.
Correct. New home construction is required to connect to sewer if the sewer line is within three hundred feet of the new residence. This connection is required before the issuance of any temporary or permanent occupancy permit can be issued to occupy the residence. Further, any related sewer fees must be paid in full at the time of connection, whether they be impact fees, maintenance fees, service fees, or otherwise. And part B to that, anytime that sewer service is provided, and the property owner or occupant refuses or fails to pay said fees, the municipality may cause the water to be shut off on the premise until all payments and arrears have been made, and that's according to state law. So we're not going out of bounds with, with our own ordinance, that all complies with state law. The, an underlying concern is to, to limit septic systems as much as possible because of the contamination that there's potential for.
Groundwater.
For groundwater. So this is with the state statute that they suggested and recommended, that if, if the line is within three hundred feet, then the person has to hook up the sewer. And we have, we have that process available here to us that can be done that way, so. If, now, if new home construction, if they're beyond three hundred feet.
That's irrelevant.
Then they're not required to, but they may want to. There's nothing to prevent them from doing that if oftentimes they would have to run line, things like that, connect, connect into it, but there's no requirement if we're beyond three hundred feet.
Is there areas in the city where the sewer is not in the street where that would prevent, prevent that happening?
Oh, yeah.
So most, most of the city's septic.
Yeah.
So you've got a sewer line that comes up Summit Creek, comes over through Lofer, which is what comes up to you and I.
Yeah.
Well, it comes up there, so it catches Maple Ravine, Northview, Lofer, and you've got some existing homes on Lofer that were not into the sewer system, so that's a whole other issue. And then that's what goes up and catches everything up by us, deep forest, all the new stuff up in there, and then if you go over, I'm trying to think of the name of the street behind Ted's house there, that drops down, there's a cul-de-sac behind him, you go down there on the left, if you drive down, there's a sewer easement that drops, and that's what goes back down and connects into Lofer, and then all of Summit Creek, all of Four Seasons. But where Larry's at, he's on septic.
I'm not. I'm on septic.
You're on septic, yeah.
Yeah.
Oak, all that stuff, so.
So they wouldn't, so if there's empty lots there, they would not be required to do that?
There's going to, there's empty lots on Oak and these other things that are so far away from.
Is there any of these other areas in the same, in the area that has sewer that are gonna have to. have to cross other lot lines or other areas to get the sewer there?
Could get complicated, especially with our flat terrain that we have.
Yeah, or where they're pumping and things like that. I just wondered if there's, do we need any verbiage that says something about?
Well, all of Summit Creek will be sewed as they before.
And that's kind of a hellbrainer.
And Thousand Oaks was initially a dry sewer. So there's, there's sewer lines up there that people have not connected to.
Like there's homes on lower Lofer and even, just trying to think, like where Jeremy Searle's at, um, Mark, places like that, homes that have been there.
Septic.
It's septic, even though there's a sewer line there because at that time, the sewer line had sort of been rammed, but it had never been hooked into the system. At that point, so now that it's there, the newer stuff, so even as you, as you hit Eagle's Nest coming off Lofer, where it goes up and around, like where Grant Hansen and areas like that are, they're all septic there as well. But at some point that sewer line did get connected here, if you go out and all six, seven years ago. And that's changed things moving forward.
Yeah.
So that you could have, there, there is a little bit of a hybrid area there, I guess I'd say, where one house that was built ten years ago might be on septic. And the house that's, to it, that's built last year or next year could be on septic.
Well, Severin and Iverson's are on septic.
On septic. And yet there's sewer in the road.
And there's sewer in the road.
At the time they looked at, the sewer wasn't.
Wasn't connected in.
It wasn't a life system.
So that shouldn't, we don't probably need to worry about that.
And there, as we've had, as there's been discussion, city council about it, they're pretty adamant that new home construction, you know, to not, to not place a burden on, uh, existing homes.
That could be, that could be a risk.
Yes.
Moving forward.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take a motion on number thirteen.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, John Stout.
I'll second it.
Motion to prove. Henry, Larry Henry, second.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is discussion of public facilities zone. Larry, have you?
I've been working on that, but I do need a little bit more time to hone it and get that to you.
Okay, yes. Is there any, you want to have any discussion about any of it, or?
Well, it's just, it's, it's interesting to me that there is, uh, there are a lot of areas of property that the city owns in Woodland Hills. I mean, and, uh, we have, uh, buildings on four of those properties. Of course, we have the park. We have the wells and the storage tanks way up at the top. We have the shed, the road shed.
Salt shed.
Salt shed and, and a pump down there. And then we have the, the, I don't know what we call it, the supplemental or auxiliary pumps. They're by Harper's.
Yeah, on, on Maple Court.
On Maple Court.
Shared system with Salem.
So, uh, and it, I mean, that, that facility probably violates the, uh, the setback areas because it's pretty darned close to.
Yes.
To everything. The others are okay, but we do need something with, with auxiliary buildings because we do need storage shed at the park. We may need some supplementary buildings down at the salt shed. There's some additional buildings there, and so I just need to, and then I don't know what the city plans to do with the other properties that, that we have.
Some of them will stay open space.
Okay.
There's been some thought if, if there's a big chunk of property to put trail on it possibly. If, if that's, you know, worked through and things, so there's been talk about putting a shed up at the park.
Right.
For, uh, yeah, supplies and things like that up there.
Supplies and things.
So.
But I, yeah, I'm working on that. It's, it's, to me, it's a common sense situation that what we require of the citizens, we should require of ourselves as a city as well. If we have situations that we can run those by and have a discussion and get feedback and move on.
Well, when the time comes, we'll have a public hearing on that. It's all opportunity for public input and things too with, uh, whatever the proposal is, so we appreciate your working on that.
Thank you.
Your efforts that's going into that, so. Um, item fifteen, as John and I were looking at a, John Stout and I were looking at a swimming pool, site plan, um, our ordinance requires, uh, a, um, at least a forty-eight inch fence around a swimming pool. And John brought up, he says, you know, I don't think that's compatible with state code. State code was six feet. And as we've got looking into it, he's right. So our, our code is out of, out of whack with state code on fences around swimming pools. So, um, our, I want to just present it to you tonight. We have any further discussion that feel we need to, but just merely change our, um, uh, our city code, change it from four feet to six foot.
I thought it was four, so.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been six for a while.
So, that's kind of an easy fix.
So why would add it? Does it require that, I mean, there's a gate obviously, because you could, maybe, does it require that a gate be a lock gate or anything like that?
It has to be automatically closing. And it has to be able to lock and be able, and have access for exiting.
And our ordinance stresses that.
Okay, so we're good.
We're announcing, we're good with that.
Yeah, the latch has to be, I think, at thirty-six or something like that, so kids can get out. It's a little low.
Well, the main discrepancy is just height.
Yep. So we'll, we'll put something together on that and bring it to a future, future meeting. Yes?
So the fence around the pools, this is just addressing if you have a fence, are pools required to have a fence, or if you have a cover in that?
No.
The state code is.
Requires having a fence. Yeah. Um, and it's, I think that's, uh, it's probably the extra precaution. You know, a fence is there regardless. A pool cover may or may not be on the pool. So they can have a pool cover.
Right.
If they want, but the fences will be required. So, and I don't, the city's not going to have any effort to try to go back and retrofit things. The fences are there that have already been built, they're there, uh, so it'll be for new, new construction. So. Um.
So the fences don't necessarily have to be right around the pool. It just has to be isolated.
That, that area has to be enclosed. It can be bigger.
It can be bigger. It can be as big as the backyard.
Could be the whole backyard, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, some are aware, some are not probably, that there's been a change in our fire chief.
Oh.
Here in the city, it's done.
Well.
Generally done.
Effective May first.
Yes. Uh, Craig has resigned and, um, he's got some private business thing, ventures that he's going with his son-in-law. So, uh, he's decided to do that, so effective May one, his resignation will be effective. Ted Mickelson has been named as the, um, the new fire chief.
We are one hundred percent behind Ted.
We're letting go from our committee, just gets in all sorts of good things.
Yeah, I know. And he's got a full plate, too.
Trust me.
Oh, he has.
Ted just inherited a lot.
He really did. He'll handle it well.
He'll do it.
Yes.
Well, do you feel in everything that Craig's doing?
No.
No, they're, the city's looking at that now to see if, what to do with the other assignments that Craig had. He'll do everything related to fire chief and fire that Craig is still in.
Like for CEO of the house, you know, fire.
Yeah, that, that's.
He'll probably do that, I mean.
Well, we're, they're still working through that.
Yeah, they gotta work through. This, this has happened since yesterday morning, so.
Yeah.
So it's still.
So he's had, he's been through, he's been fireman and, and worked by five persons?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're, we're on the department as well.
He has been assistant chief.
He's assistant chief.
For a while.
So he'll just move into the chief position.
So, only difference is he's got a regular job, too. So he'll be busy.
The advantage you've had with Craig is he's been a city employee and the fire chief, so he's been able to.
More flexible with his schedule.
More flexible with stuff, yeah. Most, where we're a volunteer department, our new chief is actually a, a civil engineer and has a regular time job, so.
Yeah.
We have some members on the department like us that are voluntarily unemployed. My wife doesn't like me saying retired, so that's my solution.
There's hopes that someday you'll get back to work, huh?
That's probably why she writes.
That's why they say that. I can't, I just figured that out.
I just thought it, yeah. Retired's kind of semi-proved.
That's right. He'll be here too much.
John and I, John and I, our wife and I are retired.
Yeah, well, it's, it's good. Um, anything else that, for discussion or questions that you've got with, with anything?
So are, are we pretty safe from flooding at this point?
It kind of looks that way. Uh, it looks like the worst is over. I, I guess there's still a little bit of concern maybe with avalanche, uh, with the weather, but as far as flooding goes, things seem to be tempered enough that, uh.
We've had a lot within the city met off in the last two weeks and pretty good. Yeah, no, I guess just FYI for you guys, where I'm at upon Eagle's Nest, um, and I measure conservatively as I piloted, but at my house, I measured two hundred and eighty-three inches of my house this year.
Did you really?
Yeah, so just under twenty-four. So obviously Lofer got more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a lot of snow.
That's a lot of snow.
Two hundred and eighty-three inches. And I'm sure I'm probably a foot or two off. On the low end.
Yeah, yes.
Moisture late as well.
Yeah, yeah. Some of the stuff we got was heavy.
Yeah. In fact, most of it was. There were a few light ones, but most of it was.
Beginning of the season, end of the season, very heavy stuff. Middle of the season, we had some.
Thanks, man.
See you, man. Most of my plowing was heavy, but stuff. Not very much light floating stuff.
Yeah.
Lot of water.
Um, the city's also losing our deputy recorder.
Yes.
Shay is, uh, leaving for a position in city of Salem, working with the recreation department, so we'll be looking for a new deputy recorder. If any of you know of anybody who might be interested to let, let Jody know and if you can reach out to him.
And Mike Prey has gone.
Mike Prey is leaving too.
Really?
Yeah, he's going to, uh, uh, kind of a good-sized landscaping.
Yeah, he's working for Glenn Garcia.
Oh, is it Glenn?
Yeah, Glenn.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Oh, okay.
I talked this morning.
All right.
The project manager, so.
Looking for a new summer hire. And they, they do, they do a lot of work.
Mike does a lot of stuff.
Yeah. Zach might come back, I think. He's not gonna come back to the city again, so. So he knows, he knows the routine already and everything, so. Very well. Anything else? We'll take a motion adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second it or third it or whatever.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
It's kind of quiet without.
Did you guys get done whatever you needed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know.
paperwork down.
All right.
Finalized.
Yeah, yeah.
We've had it done at the county for a long time.
All right. Have you got the forms?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have everything doing that.
All right, good.
We've been in touch with her. She'll be back by then.
Yes.
You just told them, oh, see her, hey, or whenever we're gonna be able to get everything finalized.
Okay.
Paperwork for done, if we don't know what's left, check it off in case they say you guys are done, so that's.
Yeah. Yeah. Very good. Okay, thank you for attending to that. Okay, that'll do it for the night.
We'll get better time to shut this off.
Yeah.
Well, I'm amazed at how fast the snow is.